Good afternoon. My name is Jason Chavez and I'm the Chair of the Committee of the Whole. I'm going to call to order a regular committee meeting for Monday, June 16, 2025. Before we begin the meeting, I want to offer a friendly reminder to all members, staff, and the public that these meetings are broadcast live to enable greater public participation. These broadcasts include real-time captioning as a further method to increase the accessibility of our proceedings to the community. Therefore, all speakers need to be mindful of the rate of their speech so that our captioners can fully capture and transcribe all comments for the broadcast. We ask all speakers to moderate the speed and clarity of their comments. At this time, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll to verify the presence of a quorum.
Councilmember Payne.
Present.
Wonsley.
Present.
Rainville.
Present.
Vitto.
Present.
Ellison is absent. Osman.
Present.
Cashman is absent. Jenkins.
Present.
Chukti.
Present.
Koski.
Present.
Hamasano.
Present.
Vice Chair Chowdhury.
Present.
And Chair Chavez.
Present.
There are 11 members present.
Let the record reflect that we have a quorum and that we must end this meeting at 4:00 PM so the Planning Commission can set up. Colleagues, I think I see in front of me an amendment to the agenda. So first, I will see who was on cue. And if we can get the meeting cue set up, that'd be great. But I see Councilmember Wonsley on cue.
Thank you, Chair Chavez. I would like to motion to amend the agenda under item number five, which would make the motion Title 5.3, that's in front of my colleagues, it would add it to that item. It is an additional staff directive related to the topic of the MDHR settlements. And this item complements the others that's listed under item one. So I know there'll be more discussion on that, and we can get to that when we consider it.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Council President Payne?
I'm in queue to also amend the agenda if we wanted to take up this amendment first.
We can move them forward together.
Okay. Colleagues in front of you, I am moving to amend the agenda to include a fourth now subitem under Agenda Item Number Five, which is part of the Settlement Agreement and Consent Decree Subcommittee. This item is a letter which a majority of the council has signed directed to the mayor, which seeks to collaborate on addressing police reforms and accountability, very much in line with the overall topic of the federal consent decree and existing enforceable state settlement agreement. And if I could get a second on that.
That's one second. Colleagues, do we have any discussion on any of these items being added to the agenda? And I might need some assistance with their clerks here, but without objection, I'd like to move, well, where may the agenda, to include both these items, all those in favor say aye. Those opposed say nay. Any abstentions? And given that these was unexpected items, I need some assistance with their clerks right now. Okay, on approval on the agenda as amended, all those in favor say aye. Those opposed say nay. Any abstentions? Thank you. All right. Okay. And my cue's not working, but if people can please use a cue, that would be helpful. Councilmember Cashman.
Thank you, Chair. I was just wanting to ask for you to note my attendance.
Please note Councilmember Cashman's attendance. Okay. Now, our first item will be receiving a presentation from the city clerk, Casey Carl, regarding the Second Council Tracking Report. Thank you.
Thank you and good afternoon, Mr. Chair and committee members. My name is Casey Carl. I have the privilege of serving as clerk for the city of Minneapolis. As the chair noted, I am here to present the council tracking report. This report covers year-to-date information about the council's progress. That means from January of this year through the last council cycle, which ended June 5th. A copy of the full report was included in your briefing materials and is available to the public using the link on this meeting agenda through the Legislative Information Management System. As always, before I dive into the report, I want to express my appreciation to my team in the clerk's office, especially our chief clerk, Ken Daler, for their diligence in polling, reviewing, and validating the data across multiple revisions. Their work on these reports enables a deeper dive into the city's work and supports increased public accessibility and accountability. And of course, I want to also thank the mayor's cabinet and department heads who help us to track the status of all of these items and provide current updates about the status of those items that are included in the report. As always, the report is divided into sections that correspond to the specific types of actions that are being tracked. As shown on this slide, that includes ordinances, enterprise policies, legislative directives, and staff directives. Together, these four types of actions constitute the bulk of the council's legislative and policymaking functions. This slide shows our data sources. We primarily extract data from our Legislative Information Management System, or LIMs. This provides the file and official act numbers, the subject matters, and official status, which are contained in the first three columns of the written report from left to right. The fourth column on the far right includes commentaries both from council members and from departments that provide the additional context and explanation about those various items and the status within the legislative process. The clerks have embedded links to the files, official acts, meeting agendas, and more in order to provide fuller context as well as access. And we've also included cross-references between those categories, such as between ordinances and legislative directives. Before we get to current data, I wanted to provide some context because we haven't had a report since January, which was a summarization of 2024's session. So I've highlighted that here on this slide. You may recall that last year I shared that the council was outpacing its performance from the prior two-year term, which covered the years 2022 and 2023. In fact, in the end, the council acted on a total of 1,449 different matters in 2024. That breaks down to 47 ordinances that were enacted, 449 resolutions that were adopted, and 953 different actions that were approved. It was a very busy and a very productive year. In fact, in August of last year, which is just a little bit more than a year ago, I noted that the increase in our overall legislative workload, which was showing the data in these reports, proved that the pace of the workload had exceeded what had been processed in both years of the prior two-year term. Despite that significant increase, the data showed there had been collaboration between council and the administration on a number of important and consequential policy proposals and priorities. In fact, in the vast majority of cases, data showed that collaboration between council and administration was the norm, not the exception. Still, this increased pace presents its own set of challenges, primarily that the enterprise is often hard-pressed to maintain the pace that is expected by council, and that includes the legislative department, not as the result of policy disagreement, misalignment, or other intention. Rather, it's that this increased level of policy work is in addition to and on top of core services, functions, and programs that are the day-to-day focus of all of our departments. Every department, as council knows, has core functions that consume the majority of their time and resources, and these simply do not include time or resources for additional legislative work. This level of increased legislative work then creates a tipping point for the enterprise. So as I raise that cautionary flag again, we'll look forward to the rest of this year, the 2026 supplemental budget process, which hasn't officially even begun yet, and the realization that this is the final year in an elective term and that items will not automatically carry forward if they are not concluded by the final meeting in December this year. That's a lot of pressure to consider, and we'll need to prioritize that work in order to avoid overwhelming our departments. To illustrate the impact I've outlined, I've provided a comparison on this slide showing total statistics from all of the 2024 session against year-to-date numbers for the current year. Remember, year-to-date means January through the last cycle, which ended June 5th. So really, we're talking about January through May. At the highest point in this level, as already noted, there were a total of 1,449 acts in 2024. So far, we currently are at 633 acts during the first five months of this year. That's approximately 46% of the total that was done last year. So we are on par from the pace that we set last year and potentially looking to even exceed that by the end of this year. In terms of ordinances, council enacted 47 ordinances last year and has already enacted 25 this year, again, showing we are on pace to potentially exceed the total volume from 2024. We've already exceeded the halfway mark when comparing the numbers between last year and this year on several other items, and you can see that there are comparisons for the other categories on this slide. Again, I will say council has definitely set an aggressive pace in terms of its own output. So I'm going to next go through on different slides each of the four categories for the first five months of 2025, starting with ordinances, which are the equivalent of local municipal statutes or local laws. Here you can see that we have data for the total number of ordinances that have been formally introduced in 2025, as well as the number of ordinances where final dispositive action has been taken. This is covered in pages one through four of the written report for your reference. As you can see, a total of 43 ordinance proposals have been introduced since January, which does include 16 that were carried over from 2024. The total number of carryover items is about 16% of the total number of introductions that we've had so far in 2025. And of that total volume, 17 ordinances have been enacted so far this year. When compared to all of 2024, as I just highlighted, that's roughly 36% of the total number enacted for the entire year in 2024. So again, we're about the midway point with six months left in this year, and again, emphasizing that the pace is significant. None of those enacted ordinances have been codified yet. However, we do expect that they should be included in a supplement to the Code of Ordinances in the near term. 23 proposals have been referred to staff for development as part of the standard legislative process, and those items are identified in the report. Those 23 proposals account for roughly 53% of that total number of ordinances proposals that have been introduced this year that I've already mentioned. Two ordinance proposals have public hearings that are scheduled for this month, and we anticipate final action in June or July. That includes an ordinance that addresses licensing for saunas that was already conducted by the Business Housing and Zoning Committee in the last cycle, as well as an ordinance regulating the sale of tobacco products currently in the Business Housing and Zoning Committee with the hearing set for June 24th. Given the high volume of vetoes last year, it's noteworthy to point out there have been no vetoes of any ordinances thus far in 2025. So, the clerks have also provided some comparative data on this slide for reference. Most notable here again, I think in my opinion, is the fact we've almost matched in the first five months of this year the total number of ordinances introduced in 2024. This slide shows data for enterprise policies so far this year, reflected on pages four and five of the written report. As you can see, there were a total of five proposals for enterprise policies introduced this year. Of that total, four policies have already been adopted and have become effective. These include subjects that include Support for the Federal Neighbors, Not Enemies Act, approval of the city's stormwater management program, support for the consideration of a request for proposals for the Minneapolis Strategic Outreach Initiative, and drowning risks and safety barriers policies for children on the autism spectrum. One policy related to the Safe and Thriving Communities Report and Plan is still held in the council's Public Health and Safety Committee. Again, comparative analysis is provided for the total data on current year and prior years. And as I've noted in prior reports, the output in this particular category is reduced in comparison to prior years, and this is unsurprising given the city's new government structure. The mayor as chief executive officer would be expected to take the lead on policymaking primarily focused on the city's internal operations. So I would expect that this category continues to be lower in the future as a result of that. However, as the governing body, there are still opportunities for council to set priorities and to guide the overall operation of the city enterprise, which is captured in these examples of enterprise policies. So it is important for us to continue to track this category. And as an interesting corollary, I would note that it is possible we would want to consider tracking the number of administration policies during the same time periods, so there is public accountability for that work done by the enterprise. The next category is legislative directives, which are included on pages five through seven of the written report. As you know, legislative directives are formal actions by the council to request from the mayor information, analysis, or other types of support for the council's official legislative policymaking and oversight functions as provided in city charter. During the reporting period, a total of 35 legislative directives, or LDs, have been adopted. That's compared to 42 adopted in all of 2024. So roughly 83% of the total volume from last year have already been made in the first five months of the current year. Again, I think that reflects major increases in volume that I've been highlighting. Despite that significant growth in volume, the administration has already reported back on 16 of those directives, and those matters are now closed, which indicates a completion rate of about 46%, or just under half of that total in queue. Another four of those had reports given, but they also require further recurring reports or additional follow-up work. So that's about another 11% of the total volume still in queue. There are 15 legislative directives that are in queue which require reports back to the proper committees. Of those, nine have specific dates already associated with planned presentations in the months ahead. During the reporting period, one legislative directive was vetoed by the mayor and was then subsequently overridden by the city council. That was related to development plans for the George Floyd Square Pedestrian Plaza. Again, clerks have provided some comparative analysis on this slide for the number of legislative directives for both the current and previous years. Finally, here on this slide, we have data for staff directives, which is highlighted on pages eight through 10 of your written report. As you know, staff directives are different from legislative directives and that these are directions from council to its own legislative department. In 2024, it also included directives in the form of formal requests to the city auditor. However, requests to the auditor have not been tracked in this report. It will be a new category of data that will be added going forward because the auditor is separate from council, and those can't be directives, those are formal requests. So far this year, there have been a total of 28 staff directives that have been adopted. That's about 67% of the total number of staff directives adopted in all of last year. So again, that data shows an increasing volume in this year, which puts us on par with or already exceeding that from 2024. Of the total volume, nine have had reports returned to committees and are now closed, indicating a closure rate of approximately 32%. 16 staff directives remain in queue, and I'll note as I started that we did have four directives identified improperly as formal requests to the auditor. Those four requests are noted in the report, and I'll just for the record say, it includes an after-action review of the case involving Davis Maturi, an after-action review of the case involving Allison Lusher, a review of vendor selection for the South Minneapolis Community Safety Center, and an after-action review of the city's engagement in a federal law enforcement action at Lake Street and Bloomington Avenue very recently. All four of those are noted in the report, and the status is also shown that the auditor has accepted all four of those and plans to bring forward the after-action reports and evaluations in the future. And again, clerks have provided some comparative analysis for the total number of staff directives for the current and prior years. As with legislative directives, you can see the comparative data here is increasing over the last year. I think it's highly likely that we will actually exceed the volume from last year when we finish this year, and I think that this is in particular a category where we will continue to see growth and expansion in future years as the legislative department builds up its own capacity to provide the desired level of professional support for council's legislative policymaking and oversight functions. And that will certainly be a primary focus for the department for the rest of this year, and as we look into the future, to build that solid foundation with our new Legislative Research and Oversight Division. So that completes the report for data. In terms of next steps, this slide shows our planned quarterly reporting cadence. We would anticipate the third quarter report will be presented to this committee at its regular meeting scheduled September 22nd. I want to conclude by reemphasizing, as I've said before, that the data clearly show the council and the administration are actively collaborating to serve the long-term interests of our residents and our community. Every ordinance, every resolution, every policy and action taken by council reflects the professional advice, contributions, and the work of our city's departments, which includes the nearly 4,000 professionals who bring their talents to this city every day. These reports are not merely highlighting council's accomplishments, although they certainly are council's accomplishments, but in reality, they are accomplishments of the city enterprise working together. And I think the community needs to hear that. As we head into a city election year, I especially think the community deserves to know its city is working together and is accomplishing important things for its residents. And as the data in these reports and others show, we work best as a city when we work together. Having said that, I look forward to bringing forward the next quarterly report in September. That completes my formal presentation. I know you have a very tight timeline and a big agenda, Mr. Chair. I'm happy to stand for questions if there are any.
Thank you, clerk call for that presentation. I'm going to check the queue to see if any of my colleagues are on queue. It doesn't seem like it. We really appreciate it.
Thank you.
And we'll see you back here in September. Seeing no further discussion, I will direct the clerk to receive and file that presentation. Now, we will be receiving a presentation from Minneapolis Election and Voter Services Division about the initial plans for the 2025 municipal election. I will welcome up Katie Smith and John Martin.
Hi, good afternoon. Thank you, Chair Chavez and members of committee. My name's Katie Smith. I'm the Director of Elections and Voter Services, and I am joined by our deputy director, John Martin. We are happy to be here to give you a brief presentation covering some of the plans that we already have set up for this year's 2025 municipal election. I'll kick it off with some really key dates. They're all leading up to big election day on Tuesday, November the 4th. But we're getting really close to what we in the Elections and Voter Services team consider our big kickoff to this season, and that starts with candidate filing next month, beginning on July the 29th. We have a few other dates here listed, including National Voter Registration Day, the start of our absentee voting period, which starts on September the 19th. Our public accuracy testing, that's a really key date for us. It's when we publicly, for all interested persons, retest for a second time all of our equipment that's going to be utilized during our election. It's a really important day where we're being transparent, the public can see the process, and they can see physically those machines being tested and the accurate votes being tabulated from that process. We do live stream that, and there'll be more information that comes out on our social media ahead of that event. This year's pre-registration deadline is going to be on October the 14th. But as always, the state of Minnesota is an election day registration state, so if someone doesn't register by October the 14th, they can also complete that registration process either as a part of voting early or as a part of voting on election day. But making the pre-registration cutoff does make the process a little simpler, means you don't have to bring anything with you when you come and vote. You just provide your name and address and get checked in, so it speeds up the process a little bit for our voters. So that one's October the 14th. Absentee voting will end on November the 3rd at 5:00 PM. That's when our early in-person voting ends because the next day's election day. And our mail ballot return deadline is election day itself at 5:00 PM for in-person drop-off. That's a change this year that goes into effect for this election. It comes out of this legislative cycle. That's one of our big key important ones to remember, 5:00 PM cutoff for mail ballot drop-off on election day. And I've got another slide that highlights some of those other changes as well. Following election day on November the 4th, with this being a municipal year, it is a ranked choice voting election, which means any winners that aren't known on election night, that'll go forward into ranked choice voting tabulation rounds. We have those scheduled for Wednesday, November the 5th, when that process will happen. We reserved Thursday, November the 6th on everyone's calendars, but we anticipate having all of that work done on Wednesday, the day following the election. As I mentioned, there are some important legislative changes that came out of this year's legislative cycle. The highlighted one there at the top is that new absentee ballot drop-off deadline of 5:00 PM. That's the time when our voters can actually physically bring their ballot into our office and turn it in to us. That's a change this year. It's one that we're really highlighting during all of our voter outreach. Deputy Director Martin will talk a little bit briefly about our voter outreach efforts. That's one that we're highlighting when we're out in community, and we'll be highlighting in all of our media outreach as well. There was also an addition stating that the student housing list will be provided to us for our use during the 18-day period of early voting and direct balloting. That goes into effect next January in 2026, but it's something that we've worked really closely with the University of Minnesota on, and something that we've been able to provide to our students during our pop-up early voting over the course of the last couple of years. So we're excited to see that change happening statewide and it being codified into statute that we'll be receiving those materials so our students can register with that method even earlier. There's a new chain of custody plan requirement that's coming out where we have to submit our chain of custody plans to the Secretary of State's office. It's not a change in our procedures or our process. We already have all of those things in place, things like secure ballot storage and secure handling of our voting materials. It's just a new form that we're going to be solidifying via the Secretary of State's office. There are new voter registration applications and absentee ballot applications that are coming out next month, and a new signup form that's going to be coming out for the permanent absentee list next year. So we are reminding people as they're interested and they're connecting with our office that are going to be running for office that those new forms will be available starting next month. And then finally, another key change out of this legislative cycle comes with filing. It requires a proof of residency provided during filing by candidates, and that can either be a valid current photo ID or an ID plus a document. It mirrors the requirements for whenever someone registers to vote. That's actually already in effect. It also requires a name pronunciation form to be submitted by candidates during filing, something that we were already receiving during our municipal elections and school district elections whenever we're taking in those candidate forms. And it's the way that our programming happens for our assistive voting devices so that we can be certain that our candidates' names are being correctly pronounced for all of our voters. There's also legislative changes clarifying campaign finance reporting and that those are going to be due specifically in election years when a name is on the ballot and the annual report due every year. We have our early voting hours scheduled for this year. They're available here on this slide, and they'll also be going up within the next couple of weeks on our vote minneapolismin.gov webpage so that all of our residents can see those listed. They mirror quite similar to what we've offered in previous years in the gubernatorial and the last presidential. We have some extended hours the last two weekends, some Saturday and Sunday hours, and we extend a little bit earlier on the Monday of election week. We're also really excited to be offering pop-up voting this year during the municipal election. I've came in and talked on it a lot, but it's a program that we're really excited about. We've seen its success both in turnout but also in reaching voters who wouldn't have otherwise participated. This year, we have five different events that are scheduled. We've got them all occurring during the direct balloting period of absentee voting, when our voters can feed their ballot directly into the tabulation equipment that we'll have with us and set up. And we used consistent evaluation considerations as we have used in previous years. Those include things like geographic dispersment, turnout, C-VAP data, trying to target underserved communities, any facilities that have expressed a need, and then access as well, facility space. Those five include, one at the University of Minnesota campus, that's going to be on Tuesday, October the 21st, from 10:00 AM to 5:00 PM, and we'll be hosting it again at the Wiseman Art Museum. We saw really heavy turnout at our University of Minnesota pop-up during the presidential election, and we've learned a lot. We've got plans in place to be able to accommodate lines. We've been working closely with the University of Minnesota already on outreach efforts, so we are excited to continue to serve students and, but anyone who lives inside, who lives in the city at the U of M Wiseman Art Museum. The second one, since this is a municipal year, Hennepin County elections won't be serving voters, so we thought it was really important to be able to reach downtown. So we've got a pop-up at the Public Service Building in Room 100 that's going to be on Wednesday, October the 22nd, and all of the rest of these are 11:00 AM to 6:00 PM. Wiseman was only different to accommodate their hours of operation. The third one is at the Urban League. Urban League has been a good partner with us of making space available for us to use for voting. This time will be the first time we've been able to do that during a municipal year. We'll be at Urban League Twin Cities on Plymouth on Thursday, October the 23rd. And then we'll be hosting again at Midtown Global Market. That one's scheduled for Friday, October the 24th. And then lastly, we're really excited to get up a little bit higher up into Ward 4, and we are going to be out at Weber Park. That one is scheduled for Monday, October the 27th. With that, I'll go ahead and turn it over to Deputy Director Martin. He'll finish up a few slides, and I'll stay here as well so we can answer any questions.
I am Deputy Director of Elections.
I am Deputy Director of Elections, John Martin. I want to go over some polling place changes that we have since the presidential election in 2024. So the reason why some of these polling places had to change, there were some that are just temporary changes because they're doing some construction on the building that we are going to be using. So they're just moved temporarily, and then there are some which are permanent moves, either the current building tenant didn't want us to be, didn't want to be a polling place, or the building just didn't suit our needs anymore. So the newest changes that we have, and these are temporary relocations, is Ward 2, Precinct 6, which is on campus, that polling place is being moved from the Grace Lutheran Church to the Hilton Hotel on campus. That will, and folks will be voting there for the municipal election this year and then the 2026 elections. The other temporary relocation is in Ward 5, Precinct 4, which is the Willard Hay neighborhood, and folks are going to be voting at North High School, being moved from North Commons Park. The more permanent changes, there's another change in Ward 5, moving to U Rock from the Lincoln School, and also in Ward 7, Precinct 2, moving to the Kenwood Community Center from St. Paul Episcopal Church. There were three changes that went into effect, which voters voted at during the special election for Senate District 60 this winter in February, and those were in Ward 1, Precinct 1. The new polling place is Premise, Inc., moved from the Columbia Golf Course. And then there were two changes in Ward 3. Both of those voting locations changed to Logan, to the Logan Park Rec Center, and they moved from Spring Hill Manor High Rise, which is where Ward 3, Precinct 3 voted, and then Ward 3, Precinct 4 voted at the National Guard Armory. And it's for 2025 and 2026, it's being also at Logan Park. For the these changes, we have a robust way of communicating those changes to the voters affected. First, we mail out a postal verification card to voters telling them that their polling place is going to be changed. Also, we will be doing targeted paid social media advertisements. We can narrow it down by zip code, so we will target the affected zip codes in our household mailer that we mail out to every household in the city. These polling place changes will be highlighted as well. Also, during our, for our various outreach events that are in these areas, we have information highlighting those changes. We were at Juneteenth on Saturday, and we had the changes that affected Ward 5 available for people. And then both in 2024 and for this year, we had signs at the polling places saying that they were going to move and highlighting the current or updated locations that folks will be voting for this year.
Next, I want to talk about our new assisted voting device. So the city for this election will have, will adopt Citywide, the Express Vote. It is our new assisted voting device. Prior, we used a device called the Omni Ballot. This was rolled out in a pilot at our early vote centers last year, and then for the Senate District 60 special election, every precinct in that election also used this new device. Couple of things that this device does, it can read the ballot to people, it can zoom in and magnify the ballot. People can operate the device either using the screen, it's a touchscreen, and then in the upper right-hand picture, there's also like a Braille keypad that people can use to navigate their selections. The ballot, once people vote using this device, the choices are printed out on what is called a skinny ballot. It's pictured in both the lower right and left-hand pictures. The ballot's called skinny ballot because it's just skinnier than the normal ballot that you might use if you're not using this device. This ballot, however, does feed directly into the same tabulators that people not using any ballot will use. There'll just be an extra tray, which is a, has a skinnier chute that people can feed the ballot in, and it's counted the exact same way as if someone was filling in a ballot, the larger ballot with the ovals. Director Smith talked a bit about our voter outreach and communication plans. We have a lot of robust efforts to make sure that not only the entire city is election-ready, but we really use these voter outreach and communication opportunities to specifically target our underrepresented and marginalized communities to make sure that they are also election-ready for each of our elections. What these plans entail, so we so far have about 15 planned voter outreach events. Those numbers will grow, and these events range from the wider, like big events like open streets to more targeted, any of the events like Somali Independence Day, Juneteenth, the Mung Freedom Festival. In addition to doing these events, we also plan to host at least, go to at least one event in each ward for this election. Along with these events, we also have a communication plan where we already have about 15 press releases, which we will be issuing out throughout the course of the year, highlighting important dates, important information for people to know about the election. But also, our office goes, in the months of October leading up to the election, city we go on the various cultural radio stations where our bilingual staff will go on these stations to be interviewed, to tell folks who listen about what they need to do to vote, what they need to do to be election-ready. Also, we plan to do some targeted communications. So we do communications in some of the various neighborhood newsletters, both on paper and online. We have the, for the students at the University of Minnesota, we'll have, we can send out email blasts through, to every student on campus, and this year, we plan to do some advertisement on the online version of the Minnesota Daily as well. And also, for our social media, we will have all of the, all of our like big posts, our key date posts will be translated, they'll not only be in English, but they'll be translated into Mung, Somali, and Spanish. And lastly, we will be sending out our household mailer, which goes out to every household in the city. Director Smith talked about this a bit, but for election results, all of the results will be released as they are completed, and they'll be released on our city's elections website, vote minneapolismn.gov. Ballots can still be returned to our office by mail until 8:00 p.m. on Election Day, and when results are released, they'll probably all come all at once or in like one big wave once those absentee numbers are merged with the results from the polling places on Election Day. And because we're using ranked choice voting for this election, some races won't be called on Election Day, the ones that need to go into ranked choice tabulation, that tabulation will begin on Wednesday and Thursday. Most likely, we'll have it all done by Wednesday. The last thing I just want to touch on is campaign finance, a few deadlines for, to remember for campaign finance reports. There are two reports that are due prior to the election, the pre-primary report, which is due August 2nd, and the pre-general report, which is due October 25th. The other key, and then there is one report, the post-general report after the election, which is December 4th. And then the certification of filing, that is due on November 12th. This is specifically important because if this is not completed and turned into our office, the winners will not be able to assume their office until the certification of filing is completed. That concludes our presentation. Election Day for the 2025 municipal election is November 4th. Polls are open 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. Director Smith and I will stand for any questions you may have.
Thank you, Director Smith, and Deputy Director Martin for the presentation. I'm going to see if anybody is on cue. First up is Councilmember Osman.
Thank you so much for that presentation. I just wanted to maybe, if you could say more about the photo engagement outreach education for Minneapolis immigrant community, understanding democracy. I know there was a budget amendment there, but does that include that outreach that you will be doing? Is that, if you could talk a little bit more about that?
Yeah, it includes that amendment, but also then some, that's just adding some extra funds to be able to accomplish that. Includes things not only like us going out to community events, but also us being able to advertise in local newsletters and newspapers. We've got the cultural media rounds that Deputy Director Martin had mentioned. Yeah, and then also, we've just been really working on our outreach when it comes to hiring so that we're sure we have people on staff, both during early voting, but then also at the polls, who are able to speak in language when people are coming in to vote so that, so that it's both that knowledge before casting your ballot, but also being able to receive the same service and the same support and the same help from your election judge or from your early voting specialist when you're coming in to cast your ballot in person.
Very helpful. Thank you so much.
Next up is Councilmember Pomosano.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a quick thank you. Thank you, Director Smith. Thank you, Deputy Director Martin. From my perspective over the years, elections just keeps getting better and better at what they do, and that is in large part to the leadership of the organization that you run. These presentations, I guess maybe 10 years ago, seemed like aspirational, like here's where we're headed. Well, you've actually gotten there. So, thank you, and keep up the great work.
All right, no one else is on cue, so thanks so much for the presentation and for all the work that you and the entire Elections team has joined. We appreciate it.
Mr. Chair, I know you have a long agenda, but I would be remiss if I didn't, in front of them and in front of the council, say publicly, I wanted to highlight, it went over very quickly, but if you noticed when they talked about legislative changes, you heard Director Smith say, several of these points are best practices that Minneapolis has already had in place for years. These are things that Minneapolis Elections and Voter Services has been doing that are now codified in state law. And I want to say that what that talks about is not just the leadership they do locally that benefits our voters, your constituents, but then on the larger issue, I appreciate their advocacy on behalf of the city and our voters in partnership with our intergovernmental relations team at the state legislature to drive these improvements statewide, so they're not just here local. I think that their impact far exceeds the city of Minneapolis.
Thank you, Clerk Carl. Our city is leading the state. All right, colleagues. Seeing no further discussion, I will ask the clerk to receive and file that presentation. And now I will turn the meeting over to Council President Payne as the Chair of the Settlement Agreement Subcommittee.
Thank you, Chair Chavez. First, we will be receiving a presentation from Michael Harrison and David Douglas about the Effective Law Enforcement for All Semiannual Progress Report, and we will invite Alefa up. Welcome.
Good afternoon, Council President Payne, Vice President Chug Thai, all council members. On behalf of myself, David Douglas, Chief Michael Harrison, and Effective Law Enforcement for All, we thank you for the opportunity to speak with you today. Before we turn to our presentation, we want to extend our condolences to all of you in the Minneapolis community on the tragic murders of Representative Hortman and her spouse, and Senator Hoffman and his spouse. In the year that we've been working here, we have seen what a close-knit community this is, and over this weekend, we have been in touch with many of the people we've worked with who've known the victims and their families. We've heard their expressions of pain, and we grieve with them and with all of you. I was listening this morning on Minneapolis Public Radio. They did an extended presentation on violence here in Minneapolis and in the nation, and one of the panelists commented that Minneapolis seems to be ground zero for so many of the issues of violence and political tension that the country is experiencing. And it underscores for us the importance of the work that all of you and that we are doing in partnership with you. The simple fact of the matter is, no one should be subjected to violence because of who they are, who they represent, the beliefs they hold, the views they express, or how they choose to present themselves to the world. The police must both uphold and embody that principle, and we understand that the settlement agreement and the consent decree are the means to that end. We recognize it is a privilege for us to be asked to work with you to do this work. We take it seriously, and we stand with you to achieving the ends of these agreements. We appreciate the opportunity to speak with you today. Under the settlement agreement, we report to the public in two forms. We issue, we hold three public meetings each year, and we issue two progress reports, written progress reports. But the two don't sync, and as a result, we issue progress reports, but we don't have an opportunity to speak to the public about them. So this is our first opportunity to speak to the public about our most recent progress report through all of you, and we hope this will become a regular feature as we go forward and issue these reports because it is important to explain our findings and to give the public and all of you context for the work that we're doing. Because this is the first time we're appearing for you, we have just a brief presentation. We just want to talk to you all and to the public about who we are, our role, of course, we'll summarize our findings from our most recent progress report, and the most important part is to answer your questions. So I think all of you know from the selection progress, selection process, Effective Law Enforcement for All, we're a 501(c)(3) dedicated to the mission of bringing communities together with their police to achieve a shared vision of policing that's safe and effective for police and the communities they serve. We take that serious. We, we're not in the consent decree business. We were actually attracted to this work because it was clear from the work that the Department of Human Rights did and the research, that there was a desire among, across this community and including the police for the kind of changes that we think are necessary to heal and change and repair policing in this country. We have an interdisciplinary team, as we've said. They're both, we've been, they're policing experts, lawyers, civil rights advocates. We have those who have been monitored, and those who have been monitored, those who've been monitored, and those who monitor. Our role is prescribed and constrained by the settlement agreement. To just summarize it here, the agreement provides that our primary duty is to fairly and efficiently evaluate compliance and move the city and MPD into compliance with the agreement. We may make recommendations, provide technical assistance, and issue reports, but we do not have the authority to order or require the city, MPD, or MDHR, or any employee to take or defer from taking action. In other words, the city and the department don't work for us, we don't run them, and we are not an agent of either party or the court. If we could take those and summarize them, as the graphic shows, we have three basic roles. We monitor, we coach, we use our experience to help the department and the city come into compliance, and then ultimately, we report to the public and to the court, to all of you, on the city's progress toward those goals. Public feedback is integral to the process. As I noted, we hold public meetings every four months. We have many meetings with individuals and organizations who are interested in this process, and all of that feedback we use to inform our work. We report to the parties, to the court, to the public, and of course, to all of you. I'd like to now turn it over to Chief Harrison to actually talk about, summarize the findings from our second progress report.
Good afternoon, and again, thank you for allowing us to be before you, to present to you, to talk about what has been done, what is being done, and what's left to do. So far, there have been a number of areas that have made approval and come into compliance with the consent decree, namely, use of force policies, which is made up of 17 poli- with the consent decree, namely, use of force policies, which is made up of 17 policies that make up a suite of use of force policies, and I will give them to you in just a minute. Crisis intervention policy has been approved, and then the mission, vision, values, and goals document has been approved. There are several others that are near approving, including those on nondiscriminatory policing, emergency medical response, and body worn camera. They're very close, but they're not there as of yet. I will pull this up and give you the 17 policies that make up the use of force. They are 5-301, force guiding principles, authorizations and standards, use of force reporting, use of force review, authorized and prohibited force options, force option restraints, force option empty hand techniques, force option impact projectiles and launchers, force option handheld chemical aerosols, force option conducted energy weapons, or CEWs, force option batons, force option canines, force option firearms, force option chemical munitions, force option flash sound distraction devices, emergency medical response, critical decision-making, de-escalation, crisis intervention, and evaluating and responding to high-risk situations. So those are the 17 policies that make up the suite of use-force policies. And so, that's where policies have been approved. There have been a number of policies that are still underway that are not yet approved. But now we move into training progress. We'll get into the progress, then we'll get into what's left to be done. In 2025 Annual Training Plan, and the Training Needs Assessments was completed and approved. Both of these have been praised as models, as this is the first time the Minneapolis Police Department has done a training needs assessment and put together an annual training plan. The crisis intervention team has an eight-hour refresher training that's been delivered. It's not an evaluated approved training, but they have delivered it because they delivered it before the policy was actually approved. Then there's crisis intervention training for 911 dispatchers, which is not yet developed, but is underway. The operational improvements, the third category, facilities, equipment, and non-database technology plan is nearly completed. A lot of work went into it, and it is almost there. And the city launched a website that explains to city employees the process for filing and investigating complaints against MPD sworn personnel is underway. Next, we have misconduct investigations and accountability. The recruitment and outreach strategy for Community Commission on Police Oversight was approved to give more capacity into having people sit on panels to be able to render discipline. Investigative training has been delivered for Internal Affairs Division and the Office of Police Conduct Review, or OPCR, personnel. IED and OPCR have made progress toward reducing their investigative backlogs, and SOPs are under development to provide limitations referring misconduct cases for coaching. The next level is, next section is Officer Wellness, which is the peer support program, has been established. It now has 21 members that have been trained. And the early intervention system, or EIS policy development, is on track to be completed. The last one is technological advancements. The data systems plan is completed and approved. The new policy management software has been demonstrated. They have seen and test drove the management software that would give them the ability to create, maintain, and store policies in a better way. And the development of a new case management system for misconduct investigations, use-of-force vehicle pursuit reports is underway. Here are the challenges. The policy development, we know it has taken a long time. It has been slower than expected for a number of reasons. There has been progress, but there is a lot that needs to be done. This space impacts delays in the required work downstream, but it doesn't mean that work hasn't been done. There are a number of reasons why it takes so long. We want them to make sure that they have good policies. Yes, we want them to get them done quickly, but we really want to make sure that they are good. We have concerns about their capacity restraints. The police department and city personnel face competing priorities, balancing both reform initiatives with the daily operations. And we have concerns about their capacity because the number of people are tasked with doing the reform work, but also have other responsibilities, and balancing the time to do all of it brings about a concern. Delays in hiring and onboarding external vendors has been and remains a concern. The wellness unit is understaffed and right now only has two full-time personnel. It is way understaffed for the amount of work that needs to be done to come into compliance with the wellness component. And OPCR and IED are still filling vacant positions, though they have made a lot of progress in bringing their capacity up and hiring new people, and onboarding them to their divisions, and getting them trained. The training issues, the crisis intervention refresher training has been delivered, but it's not independently evaluated or approved due to delivery issues. We've seen a number of things happen, especially disruption inside of the classrooms, which we brought to the attention of the leadership and addressed it. The leadership of the department has addressed it, and going forward, we anticipate that they will not have those issues. If they do, we'll bring it to their attention. Again, we will bring it to your attention. And their supervisor leadership training model has not yet started. It is vendor-based. They have contracted with a vendor to develop that for all of their supervisors. They anticipate that that would be completed and developed and delivered later this year. And then there are technological limitations. The current data systems right now are inadequate and lack automation and dynamic reporting capabilities, and it hinders our ability to audit and assess, to even see if they're doing what they're supposed to be doing, and if the data is even good. That needs to be addressed, and their public-facing data dashboards require further improvements to make sure that it is accurate and that it is transparent. So I'll turn it back over to David as we look ahead for this next reporting period in year two.
So just briefly, if you look at what we need to do, if we're building, if you think of the metaphor as building a new police department, we have to have the right policies in place. We have to train on those policies. But then we need the data systems necessary to manage and monitor those policies and to hold officers accountable. And of course, we need discipline and accountability systems, because as Chief Harrison often says, police officers do what we teach them to do, train them to do, and hold them accountable for doing or not doing, and that's our ultimate goal. So as we look over year two, we hope to complete the policy process. Right now, we can't promise that they'll all be done, but we are prioritizing those that are most important, such as stop searches and arrests, nondiscriminatory policing. As we approve policies, we'll then approve the training. Training will commence. Again, I don't know that all of the year-two training goals will be met. I know the department and the city are working on giving us new deadlines and a new plan, and we'll be engaging with them over that. But the goal is to make substantial progress on all the policies and the training. Then we'll be developing the data systems necessary so that later this year and into years three, we can begin the auditing. Let me just say, as a general matter, we don't audit before there's a chance for change. We already know things aren't right. That's what the MDHR and Department of Justice Consent Decree told us. So just to audit before things have changed just tells us more of what we already know. We try and give a chance to get the policies and the training in place, and then we hopefully are auditing the change process and measuring change. So we've listed these here, but that's a summary of them, and we're certainly happy to address any of this in more detail. We invite and welcome your questions. Thank you.
Thank you for that presentation. Colleagues, are there any questions? I will go ahead and add myself to queue, and other folks can jump in. Could you go back to the slide around the challenges? It's disheartening to hear about this disruptive behavior during training. Could you expand on that a little bit more?
Yes. So we observe training as often as we can, and while observing this, sometimes we're actually in person, sometimes we're doing it virtually. But we saw that there were people who were on their phones. There were people not paying attention. There were people challenging the validity or challenging the need to actually make the changes. And so we brought it to the attention of the department's leadership, that they should address this, that the instructor in the class has command authority over the room and should be delivering the instruction without disruption, and that if people have questions in a constructive way, should be able to ask their questions, but not challenge whether or not the department needs this or should be doing this, and given their opinions of whether or not they should be doing it. And everybody should be attentive and focused as if they were in a true academic environment, which is the goal, to turn this into an academic environment. When they're in the classroom, they're students, there are instructors, and the expectation is that the students would respond to the instructor as if they were in any other high-level academic environment.
Yeah. I'll share that I've had the opportunity to observe some of the training, including use of force, and this was with the cadets, not infield training. And I was impressed with the receptivity of the cadets. I was impressed with the techniques that were getting trained, and seeing how those techniques were compared and contrasted with other styles that had historically or traditionally been trained, they'd been trained to, and just seeing the big difference in some of the kind of Brazilian Jiu-Jitsu-informed methodology. I have not had an opportunity to observe infield training. Do you know when the next opportunity for that might be?
I don't have the answer to that. Day one and day two of use-of-force training has been approved and delivered. They are working on getting the approval of day three use-of-force training. We will grant compliance after the creation of the policy and the delivery of the day three use-of-force training. We can get you that answer, but to add context to what I was saying earlier, that was in-service training, not recruit training for new recruits.
But that would be my assumption, based on what I had observed.
It was not the new recruits. It was the in-person training for active members. And so we brought it to the attention of the leadership. It has been addressed. It has been given back to us how it was addressed. And even in speaking with instructors, the instructor has informed us that, yes, it has been addressed, brought into meetings. The instructor knows the authority he or she has inside the classroom to have command authority to teach the material that needs to be taught.
Yeah. I'll, if we can note for administrative follow-up on that, I'm sure our staff on our side can give us that next training date. I'd like to be able to observe that infield training, to see what that difference is. I see a few other folks in queue. I have a few other questions, but I will come in later. I'll recognize Councilmember Cashman.
Okay. Thank you, President Payne. Thank you, Mr. Douglas. Chief Harrison, was it?
Michael Harrison.
Harris. Thanks for being here and presenting to us and to our constituents. I had a couple of questions about the training needs and some of the progress on that. So first of all, where could we see the training needs assessment that was done?
We can get that to you or the department. We'll make a note to follow up and get that to you.
Yeah. I'm actually curious if that can be made public?
I think it is public. I don't want to, Kristin's nodding. I thought it was public. I didn't want to get out ahead of myself, but...
Okay, thanks. If it's public, that's something that I would like to be able to review after this.
Absolutely.
So let's ask maybe the clerks to follow up with that one. And so that will be made public on an annual basis as it's done.
Yes.
Okay, thanks. And then I really wanted to ask about, page 74 of the consent decree was about interactions with youth and training needs for bias as it relates to interacting with youth. And I didn't see that anywhere in this update. And so can you provide me with an update on how that is being addressed?
There's an engaging with minors policy that is in development, that's being done in conjunction with the stop search and arrest policies. So that policy and then that training will be addressed in this next reporting period.
In the next reporting period, so in the next six months from now?
I would think so. We're still waiting to the city, to the sequencing of policies and training and the deadlines, but it will be in year two.
Okay. And then you also mentioned understaffing of the wellness department. So can you explain in more detail, you know, how, what the consent decree recommends in terms of staffing at the wellness department and where we need to go? So there's currently two staff in that department?
Correct. I don't recall whether the documents specify a staffing level, but it is clear that the, I'd have to look at the report, but it's clear that the current staffing level is insufficient. I believe they're hiring three more people.
Yeah, there's been a command change. There is a new commander. There are two, but there are two full-time, two full-time members in the unit. For, we look at, for agency this size, it's wellfully understaffed for the needs that we know the agency would have. And so, we just know that that resources have to be dedicated for it in order for it to make compliance.
Do you have a recommendation on resources or staffing that would meet the need?
We can look at best practices as what other agencies do that are similar in size and similar in need, and make recommendations based on what a national best practice is. The settlement agreement does not specify an amount, but we can certainly make sure we do that so that they can deliver on what needs to be done with their members for wellness.
And I understand the department is in the hiring process to fill additional positions and maybe reassigning some folks into it. So they're already working on it.
And then the top, top update, I would say, top progress that people are most familiar with is the use-of-force policies, the 17 use-of-force policies that have been approved. Have all officers, including cadets and in the field, been trained on the new use-of-force policies, or where is that at?
Not completely. We've done, for existing officers, it's a three-day training. Days one and two have been completed. Day three is still subject to our approval and will be delivered soon.
Well, just so I'm understanding, so how many officers have been trained on these policies and how many have not?
Everybody's been trained on day one. It's a three-day training. Everyone's been trained on day one. Nearly everybody, we believe, has been trained on day two. That training is still underway. Day three training has not yet been approved. So the training has not yet been developed because, well, the training has not yet been approved. We're working to get them to get that to us so we can approve it. Once we approve it, they can begin delivering on it.
Okay. I ask this because, you know, I think it was a week ago, June 3, when there was the federal operation on Lake Street, there was video circulating of an MPD officer shoving a protester, which I would consider to be, you know, not in line with our new policies. And so I'm wondering if you are taking into account, you know, the on-the-ground things that are happening into the needs assessment for more training?
We are. And that is why use-of-force was prioritized over so many other things, because we knew what officers are doing on a daily basis, even right now. There are times that they have to use force, there are times they need to use force, there are times, maybe it's used and they don't have to use it or need it. But that's why this was the highest priority of policy to take on first. And when we had to sequence what should be done now, what should be done afterwards and later, use-of-force became the thing that we had, that they decided and we agreed to prioritize, to develop and train and teach right now, although the day three is not yet approved.
Yeah. Thank you. I, you know, I'll ask the chief about this next week when he'll be here in front of committee as well. But I would like to hear, you know, what would be your recommendation for not just training, but then holding folks accountable to their actions on the job when their training was not put to use, and we have evidence of that? So what would be the step that we should be taking to hold that officer accountable to breaking the protocol, breaking the policy?
So that's one of the main focuses, issues of accountability and discipline. Some of that is policy, some is procedures that they're developing. But we monitor these events. We monitor how they investigate complaints from both rank and from the public to make sure that they're doing it fairly and effectively. So...
Good. I'm really excited to see that the Office of Police Conduct Review process is now updated on the website. I think it's just really important for accountability that people actually can file those complaints and see them resolved. So that is a big, that is a big accomplishment that our Civil Rights Department has undertaken. So that's good news. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Chowdhury.
Thank you, and greetings. Thank you so much for being here. My name is Councilmember Irene Chowdhury. I represent the 12th Ward in South Minneapolis. I appreciate your acknowledgement of what we've been through as a community, and your solidarity in that, and coming into this meeting today, following this weekend. It just feels that it is more important than ever that we have these conversations around ensuring that our law enforcement is having the best standards of professionalism, treating every person that they interact with with dignity and equality, and practicing constitutional policing. I have a number of different questions throughout the semiannual report, and I want to make sure that I give time for everyone else to ask questions. But I wanted to kind of start... that I give time for everyone else to ask questions. But I wanted to kind of start with the section where the quarterly review panels are discussed and the discussion around traffic stops and the raising of performance and review concerns and just some of the data reporting challenges. Like just, maybe we take a step back. Could you tell me what the purpose of the quarterly review panels are?
Yes, for, thank you. The purpose of the quarterly review panels is to take incidents that occurred that are captured on video, namely body cam video, and take those on stops. There was another quarterly panel review on searches. But to take a number of incidents captured on video, bring the leadership of the department together. We as monitors were in person. And to look at those videos, they discuss them among themselves and make an assessment of what we saw from beginning to end. In both quarterly panel reviews, the one on stops, the one on searches, we saw a number of issues. And when the department discussed it amongst themselves, there was differences of opinion. There, there seems to have been, and this is from my observation, there were differences of opinion of whether or not it was a legitimate stop. And then whether or not de-escalation was used, when the person was escalated, force had to be used, maybe they were handcuffed, maybe they weren't. But the stop all the way up to an arrest, all the way up to a search and maybe a seizure. And assess every aspect of what we saw in the video. And I think in each one of them, we saw three or four, maybe five videos. There were differences of opinion of whether or not it was a legitimate stop. There was, there were differences of opinion in the room among the ranks of whether or not the searches were legitimate, whether or not things were done according to policy, protocol, whether or not the tactics were safe or unsafe. There seemed to be a, a heavy discussion about the, the de-escalation, which was on the end of it, and the explanation by the officer to the citizen of why the citizen was stopped, why the citizen was searched. And that explanation was a really, really good explanation to calm the citizen at the end. But what we were noticing that they weren't doing it, that, that, that was not at the beginning, but rather at the end. And the focus was on explaining why we stopped as opposed to dealing with the reason we stopped, and if the reason was a good reason. Amongst themselves, there, there were differences of opinion. And the, when we left, we noted that, we made that known. And there is a process to improve the quarterly panel review. I will add that the videos we saw predated any of the new policies. In the first one, which was stops, they were over a year old. And so we did notice that the videos we saw were not current videos, but were videos that predated, the policy predated any of the training that they're undertaking now. And so we know that there are improvements underway to improve the quarterly panel review. Number one, to ascertain whether or not officers are doing the right thing, if the stop, if the search is actually a legitimate stop leading to a search, leading to an arrest. And to assess that, and if it is not, what accountability actions ought to take place if they find that. And so that is underway as we speak. And we've discussed that with them and we wrote that in our report.
Thank you. Yeah, within your report, I found it, I, I felt like I really read your concern. And while there are past cases, there was current MPD command staff present performing what you articulated as either unconstitutional or not having a reasonable reason for stop. And in that situation, those officers both escalated, lied to community members, and ultimately couldn't agree. And I hear that you're saying like there were discussions afterwards. What did that type of follow-up look like and what is currently underway to kind of correct for that and come to an agreement or learn from this initial quarterly review panel in this instance?
I don't know that we have the exact answer of what they are building to, to turn the quarterly panel review into what it needs to be, other than they've given us assurance that they, they understand what it was that was happening in those two quarterly panel reviews. And they need, they're building the quarterly panel review to number one, assess what they saw and to create a pathway to corrective action, either through training or discipline or a combination of both. Should they find that in the quarterly panel review, there's something that was observed that was wrong by policy or wrong by law. And they're working to build that out. They know that this was the first one and the second one. We were there to observe. We made it known what we saw, but we saw that there were members of the department who saw it like we saw it. There were members of the department who perhaps didn't see the issues or want, or just saw it differently.
Okay, so.
But the department and the leadership were receptive to our observations and our opinions of what we saw and what we think they need to do.
Okay. The police chief was present for this as well?
Yes.
Okay. And then who makes up the members of the command staff?
Assistant chiefs, deputy, the chief was there, assistant chiefs, deputy chiefs, commanders, inspectors. And there were a few of the, the staff members who provide support.
Okay. I noticed in this section of it that there wasn't a lot of information about the community members who were stopped. And I know that what brings us here today is two findings of race-based policing after thorough investigations at both state and federal levels. Could you share what the racial makeup of community members who appeared in these videos being unlawfully stopped were?
I'd be answering from my memory. But in the first one, when it was on stops, it, I believe it was African-American males. And I believe one or two in the searches was not African-American. If, but I'm going from my memory on that.
Okay. And then was this report the first time city or MPD leadership learned of, learned of the situation of command staff not being able to properly identify lawful policing?
I'm sorry, can you repeat that for me, please?
Yeah, was, was this report or this quarterly review panel, one of the first instances of MPD or city, city leadership not being able to, to understand that there were officers, command staff, that were not able to identify if lawful policing was occurring in these instances?
To my knowledge, the one on stops was the first one. It was the first one we were in observation, in person and online, virtually. And so I don't know if there were other meetings that this was either viewed or discussed prior to the quarterly panel review on the stops. And then the second one was on searches.
Okay, thank you. I just have a few more questions before I pass it on to the next council member. This is on the historical backlog data for OPCR and IA. To be honest, I kind of found this data a little bit confusing. The dates were inconsistent and the timelines didn't feel as aligned. And I, I just personally felt like there were some conclusions being drawn here that I didn't understand how we got there. To your best knowledge, do you feel like this data is accurate? And what quality review has been done of this data? Any quality checks? I know the audits haven't started.
We are in weekly meetings with Internal Affairs and OPCR. We wanted to make sure that we were getting good data. So we challenged them to make sure we were getting the good data. And so now in our weekly and bi-weekly check-ins with IA and OPCR, we're getting, we have the number of cases that were originally in the backlog, which was predated, and I believe the date was.
180 days.
Hmm?
180 days.
180 days before the cutoff point. Anything that came in after the 180-day became part of the, the new classification of cases that are not part of the historical backlog. Both of them have worked to improve the backlog, reduce the backlog, hiring new people, assigning people to those units, training them how to do these investigations. Because along with adding people, they have to add skill. And as we add skill, the cases can be done better, they can be done faster. And we believe that we get the data now, we believe is accurate data because we're checking in with them every single week on where they, what they had, where they are now, and the pace and speed in which it takes to complete a case to bring that number down. Those are questions we ask every time we meet, not just where you are, but how long does it take from beginning to end for a seasoned investigator? How long does it take from beginning to end with a new investigator? And so that, those numbers should get better over time with skill improvement and with capacity improvements. We believe that the data is good now. We didn't know at first, but we're meeting with them so regularly now that the numbers seem to be the same every week.
Okay.
If I could just add, we, that is right. But we've not audited independently the process as to the numbers or the quality of the dispositions. So we are working with them every week. I think we can tell from working with them, they're accurately reporting the numbers. But we will separately do our own independent verification of the numbers and the quality of the dispositions of the cases.
And is that going to happen in the second year?
Yes.
Okay. And were cases reviewed to make sure that they were not wrongfully sent to coaching?
Not yet.
Not yet, okay. And then.
Now, we, we understand the department has made changes and they believe they've addressed that issue, but we have not independently verified that.
Got it. And I understand that there's significant data barriers specifically for Internal Affairs, which is policeman misconduct reported from within the department. One of the things that I read was that there, they, they manually do intake. What does that look like? Like what does manual intake look like for IA?
I think it means they enter the data. I may have to get back to you on that. It's the tracking systems that I think, we think need improvement.
Yeah, it sounds like they don't have a case management system that allows for automation or status updates.
Correct.
So I guess, yeah, mine is like, is it like paper files? Is it their own like, like older computer system?
I think it's more of the latter. That they don't have a consistent system that talk, you put it in once and it tracks through. So they have to constantly manually update and track the numbers.
Okay. I'll rest with my questions there, but I'll ask for a, a follow-up on specifically what does manual intake look like for Internal Affairs?
Before, before we move on, part of the manual process is how they categorize what, what it is they see. So it is a manual process to categorize the type of infraction or the type of violation and where it falls. And so that's still a manual process.
Okay, thank you.
I will next recognize Councilmember Wensley.
Thank you, President Payne. First, thank you to my colleagues for raising some of the concerns that I had. I did want to get some clarification or follow-up to some of the things that's been raised already. Initially to, I looked at page, I believe it was 33 related to the traffic stops and particularly the dynamics that both Council President Payne highlighted and Councilmember Chowdhury in terms of receptivity by both rank and file, police officers, and then also how we were seeing, or sorry, how either you all were observing the commands leadership by him. Because I think, and from the investigative reports, it seems like culture issues or misconduct issues really starts to become normalized when you, when top leadership is also exhibiting that. So really looking at how do you start from the top? And I heard you mention some of the things that it sounds like MPD leadership is putting in place to address the trainings or workshops related to the, the traffic pursuits. But could you share a little bit more in terms of how that's playing out, for instance, on the crisis intervention trainings? I know that's referenced on the slide, but lack of professionalism amongst rank and file officers were noted there. I would like to know, it seems like you all had a conversation based off of the report with MPD around why there was, you know, officers challenging the presence of either ALIFA or MDHR in those trainings. So just get a sense of what corrective efforts have been discussed in regards to that particular training too.
Great, great, great question. I think the, the coach, it's a, I think you, you said it, it's a cultural issue that has had to and continues to have to be addressed about others in the room other than the sworn members. That's not unique to Minneapolis, but the culture change that has to happen, and I think it is, of other people monitoring and watching what's done, what's said, and pushing back against what's said that's incorrect, what's done that's incorrect. And those like members of our team, of MDHR, of the city, anyone, a community member who's observing training and the culture of officers and rank and file accepting that those folk are in the room and have input about what needs to be done and how it should be done. I think we're working with them and they are working to adjust to that new culture. That's point one. We brought it to the, of course, we brought it to the leadership that these things occur and it's, we've been given assurance that it's going to be handled. We've circled back with instructors who told us that the instructors were, the instructors met with agency leadership. The instructors now know they have command and control of the room. We look forward to looking into the future to see if that really manifests itself and is sustained or if they backslide. We will certainly be watching that. But it's something new to the officers, to the rank and file, that there are other people that know and other people who should have access and they're not the only ones in the classroom. And they, they just have to accept that. I think it's something new. Over time, they will come to accept it. It will become normal. But they're moving into the new way of doing things, the best practice way of doing things. And it's new and strange to some people. And people challenge what they don't understand. They ask questions and they challenge what is different. We're not afraid to, to point out that, number one, we're the monitor, we have to be there, we can be there, we should be there, and we should be reporting on what we see that goes well and what we see that does not go well. And we're certainly willing and we'll continue to do that. I hope I answered that.
And the senior officers piece again, like how command leadership, how you're relating to them, because it sounds like they are the ones that takes the next step to then meet with the instructors, everyone else to kind of do the shifting of, of culture and practice.
Yeah. I have brought concerns directly to the chief in the first year. I have brought concerns to other members of the agency who have delegated authority from the chief about these issues. I have spoken directly to the training commander. And so we have this unfettered access and we go to, we can go and often go to everybody to make sure. But one of the things we spend a lot of time on is making sure the vertical communication and the lateral, in and up the chain of command and the lateral communication across the agency makes its way to the people who need to hear it. And it makes its way back to the people who need to hear it and do it. And so that's something we're paying close attention to because even though we may bring it to senior leadership, we have to ensure that the people who actually perform the work on the ground actually get good guidance, get good instruction, and have clear, concise instruction on what they're supposed to do. Not that they get it, but they understand it.
Thank you for that.
Just add up briefly when we talk about leadership. Tone at the top is everything. And so we can observe these things, but as I said, we don't run the department. The change has to come when across the department, leadership at the top communicates the new direction and makes clear that everybody is expected to be on board and will be held accountable. So it's not an issue of just going to the people in the classroom or the instructors. We take our concerns to the chief and then we are going to hold the chief and the leadership accountable for making sure messaging goes down because these departments are command and control. And you can have questions, you can have opinions, but once the organization makes a decision, its direction is going, it's up to everybody to follow that direction. And that's the standard we will hold the department to.
Thank you for that response, especially as you're referencing the accountability piece. I see that one of the things that you all will be addressing next is around the discipline matrix. And I, I will note on page 40, and why I'm interested in this is you all note that there was, it seems like from our monitors, you know, this, and I'm reading from here, expression of frustration and anger with the disciplinary process and what they perceive as inconsistent application in handling of discipline. I know my office has reached out to. I know my office has reached out to MPD as well around like getting a sense of what is the status of our discipline matrix. So it was slightly unclear to me if you could just summarize what's going to be happening with that, so that both, as you mentioned, horizontal, vertical, but also I think for the public, I think it's been raised even by Councilmember Cashman, we've seen in recent weeks some troubling incidents in, of perceived misconduct by our officers, and also how they're going to be in compliance with some sensitive ordinances that's meant to protect vulnerable residents. And what are the disciplinarian like options and guardrails that's in place? It's been lack of clarity. It seems very flexible and malleable. I don't know if that is supposed to be the best standard, but just wanted to get a sense of what's happening with you all's advisement around the discipline matrix policy.
Great point. Our, our participation is, number one, working with them to give them national best practices on what this, what a good matrix should look like. The good matrix has to be built on the strong, good, strong policies, so that when there are infractions of policies, the matrix provides for discipline that is fair and consistent and just and is commensurate of the violation. Point one. Point two, that the, any discipline given for any infraction is consistent across the agency for any one person who violated a particular policy and is disciplined. Anyone else across the agency who violated the same policy in the same way is disciplined, and the same discipline is dispensed to that person in the same way, unless there is, unless there are escalating circumstances where the person could have been violated it multiple times and it should be a progressive discipline. But the same infraction committed for the same policy should have the same discipline. We are working to make sure that they build out a disciplinary matrix that does that, but that has to be done on top of the policy that prescribes what the policy should be and what the violation of that, what the discipline should be if and when that policy is violated.
Thank you. And then also, I believe, Councilmember Cashman did a notation for a memo, some additional information that I wanted to have be included in that, because it really focused on addressing some of the capacity issues that you all highlighted here. And I think you also touched on, you know, since the publication of this evaluation report, there has been some movement in terms of OPCR, getting additional staffing. I would like to see what are, or what has been funded through council to the mayor's budget to some of the things that were like identified here. So I'm seeing, you know, you highlighted staffing support or resources needed for IA, for instance, or looking at some of the technological needs in order for you all to have accurate data and so you can track compliance with some of these provisions. So I just wanted to get a clearer sense of, you know, what has been funded by council so far, especially as we're going into the budget or this next budget season, and what those gaps continue to be based off of what we have funded or what we have not funded.
Thank you.
Those are the questions I had. Thank you, President Payne.
Councilmember Chowdhury.
Thank you so much. This might be more like a point of feedback. I really appreciate how important it is that you are an agent of the people and you are an independent evaluator, independent from the city, right? Seeing a nod of yes, at the same time, too, you're both very in sync. One, one thing that I'll just like share with you in looking at the status of year one goals, just at a quick glance, the way that it's listed of status completed, the first three with the city and, it looks like the city and the Minneapolis Police Department are doing really, really well, but the first three are all goals that ALIFA completed. And I think it's important that we make a separation of those goals because we want to make sure that you appear independent, and I think this could be misconstrued as the city achieving goals when it is the monitor's goals independently being concluded. So that was just one point of feedback that I wanted to share. And then this report also states that there's a completed community map. Could you kind of explain to me what that is and could you point out to me where that would be located?
Yes, the map is our idea because what we're trying to do broadly is to engage the community and also help the community build ties with all of the constituencies that are working in this space. Some of them are actually here today. So when, in the interview process, one of the things we proposed, we would post a community map. It's voluntary for organizations in the space to give it, to present their information. And you can go to the website and see who else is working in this space and a little bit about their mission. It is our hope, all right, eventually we're leaving, but what we want to leave in place is an infrastructure to continue the oversight, and an element of that is to make sure all of the groups doing the work know of each other and can work with each other. In addition to that, we're working to form an implementation liaison council, and I don't want to belabor the point, and I'll come, but first, the answer to your question is the map is on our website. I believe it's under the link Reports. And as we get information, we build it out. So that's the specific answer to your question. But as we look at it more broadly, we've been, we're also hoping to build an implementation liaison council. And this would be a group of people who would commit to attending regular update meetings about progress. And the reason we want to do that is that what we found in other places is the people who are there with you at the beginning are often not there with you at the end, because the people decide, oh, things are going well, they stop attending. And then you get a new group of people and they don't understand the history of the process. So what we're looking for is form a group that would have both structure and continuity so that they can understand the progress that's being made or not being made, and that they also can reach out to their friends and neighbors to explain more broadly to the community. The one footnote I'll say is there are lots of groups out there working, and so as we say, you know, it tends to be the same hundred people, and you can, you can overburden people. So whether we do it as a standalone or whether we become part of another, but we are committed to sort of building that continuity and relationship so that people will understand this and hopefully be able to take over some of the important oversight engagement roles when we're gone.
Thank you. That's really clarifying. I, I appreciated Councilmember Wonsley, you bringing up the list of capacity, procurement issues, delays in contracts, and we have a lot of goals and status year two for on track. How likely, how likely do you think that the city and the Minneapolis Police Department are to making these goals?
We don't know. The city is working, is doing its own internal review and is going to come present to us, I think in the next week or so, their new revised plan. We're also looking at things and then we'll merge them. Given the pace of things, I think we'll get the policies done and much of the training, but we do have a concern that, because of the time involved from policies to developing, that not all of the training can get done by year two, but that's, we have not yet heard from the department about its views of it. Candidly, as, as we look at it, we think that may, we may not get all the year two training goals accomplished.
Okay. And there's going to, you said that there was going to be an independent review from the city next week that you're checking in on, or, sorry, could you clarify that?
Not an independent review, but we've been talking to the city and they're mindful of where things are behind. So they are looking at their own processes and coming up with new deadlines, and they're going to come to us and we'll talk with them about how realistic they are. We may suggest different priorities. I think it's very important that we get to stop, search and arrest. I assume that's what they're doing, but if, if, for example, that wasn't a property, priority, we would probably recommend that we focus on getting the stop, search and arrest suite of policies done as a priority. I know they want to do that training in the coming year, so we need to get that policy done. And candidly, I think it's a little behind track, so we got to figure out a way to accelerate that.
Great. Yeah. And I also appreciate the notation to see what has council done thus far to help support meeting these goals within the settlement agreement. I know that in our 2024 budget, we approved 34 different positions across multiple departments, MPD, city attorney's office, IT, civil rights, and then I think we approved a handful of FTEs in the police department this last year to endeavor in that goal. And then the early intervention system, I think that was about a $2.3 million investment from this council. And I guess in that same vein, looking at this first set of reports for the first year, there's been a lot that we've done to support these efforts. Do you think there would be additional actions that would be helpful?
I don't know that we can say yet, but you're asking a question we are asking. There are a lot of people deployed to do this. Candidly, we're still having a hard time figuring exactly how everyone's being used. That's what we're really trying to focus on, to make sure that the people are being deployed in the best ways, you'll recall. And I guess still, there have been, there were two implementation teams, the departments and the city attorney.
Yep.
When we came in, we urged them to do some restructuring to get better alignment. That's gotten, that's improved, but that's another thing we are now looking at as we assess how to learn the lessons of year one and year two to make sure we've, we've got people deployed the right way. We do know there will be some additional resources needed for some of these tasks, but we don't yet know the, the balance between efficiencies and additional capacity, but that's what we're looking at.
Yeah, I think even in this report, there was a mention of in internal affairs of a need of like an analyst, an additional analyst position. I'm not sure if that's something that's worked through the body yet or not, so that's interesting to me. I think some of the last things that I kind of want to touch on, especially in light of the, the federal government moving to dismiss the DOJ consent decree, there was a lot that happened really quickly, and that was kind of one of my impetus to request that the city attorney help get ALIFA before this body, because there's a lot of public interest in understanding how far along we're moving on the settlement agreement, what does it mean now without the DOJ consent decree? And one of the things that I found kind of striking in the, the report that was in a lot of speeches and a lot of newsletters is that the city and MPD have made more progress towards building a foundation for sustainable reform in the first year of monitoring than any other jurisdiction. And the mayor even shared and invoked ALIFA in a statement where he said that independent, our independent monitor has lauded the meaningful progress we've made under the state settlement agreement, and the public can count on clear, measurable proof that our reforms are moving forward. And so a question that I have, and I've heard from other community members, is what measurable proof do you have that the city and MPD have made more progress for sustainable reform in, in the first year of monitoring near, more than any other jurisdiction?
So collectively, our team has extensive experience with a number of consent decrees, and we know of other consent decrees, there are annual consent decree conferences. So generally, in the first year, and we're really focusing on the first year of our involvement, other cities are not as organized, many cities have resisted change. We have not found resistance here, perhaps also because of the work that was done before we got here. The city was prepared to move forward with us. They were receptive to our suggestions and recommendations. And for example, the, the progress we've noted is significant. Doesn't mean that it's fast enough or enough, and there, we don't know that we'll be saying that again in year two. But we do want to acknowledge, we think it's fair to acknowledge the hard work that's been done. We can tell you that the personnel in MPD, personnel in the city really have been working hard. We're not getting pushback from the people who are charged with implementing this. They have work nights and weekends, they've been receptive. We want to acknowledge that work, and that's not the case in every consent decree city. But this is just the first year, and now we are really going to expect, and let me step back. We described it as a foundational year, as, as we got to know the department and we got to understand its resources and understand its capabilities and what they needed to do, and they had a lot to learn. But in year two, we will be moving, expecting more from them in terms of what they deliver, and we will be holding the department as a whole and the department leadership and the city accountable for meeting their goals. So first year, a lot was accomplished. But as we note in our report, and I think if you read the whole report, we have a lot of shortcomings and deficiencies acknowledged, and we do see some potential headwinds that we'll be looking at as we go forward. But if you view the second progress report as a snapshot in time, it was a fair statement at that time, but it's not a prediction of what may happen in the future.
Yeah. And what I'm hearing for you, for you is in the context and in the relationship to other consent decree cities, the most amount of progress is more about a willingness to show up and do the work and less of a resistance to independent monitoring and the settlement agreement. And I just like...
I think that's fair.
Yeah. And I think I just want to state for the public, for me, I think it's important to be really sober in this moment around the progress that we're trying to make in the settlement agreement and understand what those deficiencies are and understand what those headwinds are. And I felt like the way that that statement was taken and portrayed put rose-tinted glasses over the situation, and it was less, it gave the appearance that we're that like we were making a lot of progress on like a lot of measurable categories. And I think that's not the case because we have audits that still have to happen, and that is where we will understand if there's actual measurable proof that we have made an immense amount of progress. And in, in that question, we know that a lot of the goals have not been started yet, and there's a footnote about the, the audits itself that will only begin after training is completed or updated and six to 12 months are past or elapsed. Does that mean in the next semi-annual report, there's not going to be any actual audits conducted, or will there be some?
I think there will be some. I think we'll begin to audit backlog and how those cases, the disposition of those cases. The body worn camera policy will be approved and trained, and so we think certainly in year two, we'll audit that, whether it will be by next October, when our next report is done, I don't know. We may be in the process or maybe commencing it, but those are at least two audits that we expect will be...
Okay. Two audits for sure that we'll expect.
And there may be others, but those are the two I...
Thank you. When does the next report come out?
The next reporting period runs till October 30. The process is it takes us a few weeks after the close of the period to assemble the report. Then the parties have at least 30 days to give us feedback, then we incorporate that feedback, and then we issue the report. So there's a significant lag between the close of the reporting period and the issuance of the report as a function of the procedures prescribed in the settlement agreement.
And then for this draft of the semi-annual review before it was finalized and published, were there, who was, who gave feedback on it? Was it like community groups, the city, MDHR?
The city and MDHR. City including the police department and MDHR give us feedback before we release the report.
And then what input did you receive on this report? And then I, I'm kind of harping on this sentence because again, I think it's important to be really sober in this moment about where we are in the settlement agreement. Like, what feedback did you receive on that statement?
As you can imagine, the city was very pleased with it. I think MDHR probably thought it was too generous. It was, it was a sentence we thought about, it went back. We, we all collectively reviewed it to make sure we as a team were comfortable with it, and we are. Michael often says the way the message leaves, he says sometimes the way the message left my lips is not the way it landed on your ears, and that may be the case with this. We, from our perspective, we've been at it a year, but we recognize we are stepping into a decade of mistrust and broken promises, and I know that people, many people are looking at us as the next promise waiting to be broken. We're not going to fix in one year mistrust that has developed over a decade. What we need people to understand is that we're working this process through. It is, this is a long process. this process through. It is, this is a long process, and it happens incrementally, and certainly more slowly than people would want. We said with respect, I think, to training, it was more important to be right than rushed, but that's true for all of this. If we are going to have sustainable changes that the department carries on after we go, then it is important that we take the time to build these things right. We do need to ask for patience in that process. It is one of the reasons we are so committed. While we have public meetings, and we've gotten much tougher feedback at some of those public meetings than today, which was certainly gentle by, at least so far by any standard. But the public has not been shy about sharing with us their views of limitations on the process and their skepticism about it. But we're going to continue to show up. We're going to be transparent about what we're doing. We will acknowledge successes and failures and our limitations, and we hope that by doing that over time, people will at least come to respect that we are doing our best to implement these agreements to the best of our ability.
Yes.
We know it's going to take a while.
Yeah, thank you. I appreciate that. And I think, for me, like, reading this report, I think the appearance and the maintenance of independence is super key, and I think there's places where that could be improved. I think the type of messaging that's used and communicated, going back to that sentence, having that additional context is very, very helpful. And just having this conversation about the fact that there's a lot of progress to be made, and this is year one, and year one does not mean year two is going to look the same, and that there's work to be done. And I think public, public accountability is really, really key, not only for the, the independent review, but for this council, for the city, for the Minneapolis Police Department, because it's not just a decade of mistrust, it's decades of mistrust, right, that we're working, working with. And I'll just conclude with my last question, and then I'll give it back to you, council president. I know that ALIFA is required to complete an annual survey of community members using both qualitative and quantitative evaluation as a part of the agreement. This review also requires an annual survey of MPD officers. Will the results of these surveys be included in the next semi-annual review?
I don't know that we'll, we're developing it now. I don't know that the results will be, I don't know that it'll be completed in the results by the next semi-annual report, but it will be completed in year two. And we'll certainly, when we have the results, we would report them at our next public meeting. And I guess if, I mean, we'll generate a report of the survey, and if the parties agree, we could just release the survey. I don't know that we need to wait.
Okay.
We have to be bound by the communication structures in the agreement, but we would certainly ask the parties, here it is, if it makes sense, we could just release it.
Great. Well, thank you. I appreciate you coming to our chambers and doing this presentation, and I look forward to kind of a consistency in this type of meeting.
Thank you. So do we.
Thank you.
Councilmember Utah.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you. I want to sincerely thank you for your hard work, and I appreciate the two positive reports that we've gotten, and I know the community that I represent do as well. We know for sure that it's not over. I love how you stated that. That's year one. Year one has been good, but we're hoping for the same trends in year two. And I'm, I'm hoping that we continue to work as a community in a positive way to make sure that year two is even better than year one, because I'm hopeful that we can do it. The, the accountability measures that you laid out here today, the, the training, these are things that I've always heard from people, that they want it better of for MPD. And it's happening. It's never happening fast enough, but it's happening. So I, I just wanted to say thank you all so much for the work. I'm looking forward to keeping us on track towards progress, positive progress. There's, there's always opportunity for bumps in the road. I'm just hoping that we're on the side of being able to recognize things. You know, some of the things you said today that you observed in training. I like that you shared that, because we can take that and make sure that this third training that is supposed to happen is, is looked at from that perspective. Are people looking at the phones? What are they doing? I mean, I personally look at my phone and can hear too, so I don't know what was happening there, but I get what you're saying, right? Like, we want undivided attention on this. We don't want you to miss one thing because lives are at stake, right? So I get that. But I love that, that's an observation that you've shared, and it's some behaviors that can be corrected. There's some expectations that can be put out there and said, okay, no phones during the training, right? Like, this is the expectation, this is what we want. That feels positive to me, especially when you've kind of rounded this out by saying, we've got no resistance. We have, everyone wants to work on this. We're working together on this. So again, thank you all so much for the time today. Thank you for the time you've spent in community. I've come to as many community meetings that I've, I could attend. It's not an easy thing to do, but I love that you let community participate where they are, and the expectation is not for them to come and find you somewhere, or to just have this one way of connecting, because there are a lot of opinions and voices and ideas and concerns. And I think those all need to be taken into account for us to have better policing. We all care about it, and so I, I really do appreciate the time, the effort. Of course, we've had conversations about differences and styles of things, but I'm open, and I'm trying to learn more about this process and how it works, and, and how it fits our respective communities in many different ways. So again, thank you for the positivity. Thank you for this reporting. I'm looking forward to year two being even better, and me being able to put out a newsletter that highlights even better work that you all are doing on police reform. Thank you.
Thank you.
We share your hope, and we thank you for your comments. Councilmember Inville.
Thank you. And I want to take the time to thank you both for bringing your team out to Ward Three. It was very well received. I had so many positive comments about how well you're doing. And I also appreciate that you acknowledge the hard work that our police department has done. You know, you're correct, is we want more, we want it faster, we want it better, but our officers and command staff are working hard, and for you to say that loud is very important. So thank you for that. And I also want to thank you for your patience today. You've been asked a lot of tough questions, but you answer accordingly, and it's great that you're taking the time to educate us on what you are doing in your role in this comeback from our police department for a better service. So thank you both. It was good to see you again.
Thank you.
Good to see you.
And then I put myself in queue for-
I saw how that went.
I put myself in the queue to hopefully ask some closing questions that can carry us to our next discussion item. You know, I pulled up our website that went through our timeline, just kind of going all the way back to 2020. And very early on, one of the first actions that we took was a joint statement along with MDHR around some shared principles before we got into the full negotiation of the settlement agreement. That joint statement really highlights the expectation of a DOJ consent decree, and it was hoping to accomplish a couple of things. I think many of the main things that the city was trying to accomplish was consolidating the work of both of those agreements under one monitor, which heavily influenced the selection of ALIFA as the monitor, because the DOJ did have some role in signing off, even though it wasn't for their agreement. And the other thing that was contemplated was that there may need to be some adjustments or amendments to the state settlement agreement in conjunction with the consent decree from the federal government to make sure that there, the two documents weren't in conflict. A lot of us on the dais probably know the answer to this question already, but just for the sake of the public, can you just speak to the mechanism for amending or modifying the agreement?
I don't know that I can speak to the mechanism as a lawyer. I know the agreement has provisions to be amended, and I think it's been amended for some things, but I can't speak to the legal issue. I don't, we're not privy to discussions. I don't know the law. I, I, I don't know if you-
For the public's purpose, it is possible to be amended, essentially, under the correct set of circumstances, correct?
I think I'm only hesitating because as a lawyer, I, I'm reluctant to sort of issue a legal opinion when it not, but as a general matter, agreements, parties generally can amend agreements if they want to. This one is subject to the court's approval, so it wouldn't, I think, be entirely up to the parties, but under the right set of circumstances, I'm sure it could be achieved.
And then assuming court approval, has, has the amendment, has the settlement agreement been amended since it was originally enacted back in 2023? Has there been any issues with the court and any amendments?
Not, we're not privy to that, but I do know it was amended to change some deadlines and dates. Parties presented at the court, I believe it was granted by the court promptly. So certainly nothing ever came back to us that there were any issues with the amendments.
And the reason I ask is because there's a lot of us that are really committed to making sure that the federal consent decree provisions are actually implemented. The mayor's been on the record. A lot of us council members have been on the record. We are trying to figure out how we actually achieve that beyond, you know, we have seen that just last week, the mayor issued an executive order, making said commitments, but we want to make sure that these commitments can outlast this mayor and the city council, frankly. And we're looking to the settlement agreement as a potential venue to do that. We don't, we're in uncharted territory. We don't have a roadmap. My intention is to build this roadmap in public. And so just, I think you're going to be a really critical partner in this roadmap. And as we're in these early stages of developing this roadmap, and hopefully developing this in a very public and transparent way, do you, do you see a problem with merging the federal consent decree with the state settlement agreement?
Again, with the caveat, I'm not the lawyers. I don't know the law. I don't. I, 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 there's nothing I'm aware of that way.
Okay, that's good.
Be an insurmountable obstacle.
That's good to hear. And then I also saw, and again, this is a two-party agreement. I think I saw reported in Axios that the commissioner of the Human Rights Department was interested in merging it. Do you know if the MDHR commissioner has either made any offers or agreed to sit down to try to negotiate this? Do you think, do you have any insight into whether or not they'd be amendable to that?
I believe based on public information, I think they're amendable to it, but we're not privy to the discussions between the parties about that.
Okay, because I think, you know, we, we here on city council are just very interested in figuring out how do we codify these commitments in a way that binds this institution, not just the mayor, not just the council, but this institution to these reforms. And I'm really hoping that you can be a partner in helping us build this roadmap, roadmap out in public.
It was certainly our understanding that we'd be partnering with you to implement both agreements under judicial oversight, and we think that would be the preferred path if it's achievable. I want to be careful not to communicate that without judicial oversight, it's not achievable. I don't think that's right. But clearly, judicial oversight is better, and it's particularly better in this community where there is so much distrust. And we've heard the concerns of the community. We read the papers and we hear things. So we understand the value of that. I think our position is we're prepared to do whatever we are asked to do and are capable of doing to help achieve the ends of the two agreements.
I appreciate that. And I am not seeing anybody else in queue, so thank you so much for that presentation. I think the community is really valuing this opportunity to see this conversation play out in public.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We look forward to presenting before you in the future.
Excellent. And seeing no further discussion, I'll ask the clerk to receive and file that presentation. The next item is a staff direction authored by myself directing the legislative department to produce an analysis related to municipal oversight and implementation of consent decrees. Is there any discussion on this item? In the interest of time, I'm not seeing any comments, so I will move approval of this item. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Abstentions? The ayes have it, and that carries. The next item, I am going to actually ask our city clerk to jump in, because there are some procedural nuances that we should really talk about.
Thank you, council president. First, I'm going to apologize upfront for putting council in an awkward position. Things have been moving very quickly over the last two cycles, and I perhaps did not intervene in a timelier manner when necessary. This morning, Ms. Sinatra, the clerk of this group, brought to my attention the fact that sub-items one and two under item number five are directly related, and that the sequencing of those is out of order. Subitem number two, which is the passage of a resolution proposing to waive attorney-client privilege on a legal memorandum from the city attorney's office, would need to come before directing the city's, or city attorney's office to take necessary actions related thereto. So in terms of the sequence of, sequencing of these items from a procedural perspective, number two needs to come forward first. It needs to play out entirely throughout the legislative process before the body could consider the first subitem, which is the direction to the city attorney's office. I know that two other items were added, so there are a total of four sub-items under agenda item number five. I just want to be clear that item number two has a dependency to item number one. Item number three, which is a new staff directive, which was added from council member Wansley at this meeting, and item number four, from you, council president, a letter related to broadly police reform and accountability, asking for collaboration with the mayor and administration, are not dependent upon the passage of the resolution that seeks to waive privilege on the city attorney's memo with advice. So I just wanted to say number one, I think we should reorder the agenda first to make sure that we're clear on what are related items. Subitem number two should be number one. And then obviously, if the body wishes to take up three and four, which are not dependent upon that, they may do so today. The subitem number one, as it appears on the printed agenda, would need to be moved to the end and would be dependent on an outcome of the passage of the resolution. Happy to stand for any questions to clarify on that, but that would be my recommendation to the body.
Thank you for that clarification. And I think I'll just say without objection, we should take up that reordering and take up issue, item number two as item number one, and postpone item number one currently to our next cycle pending mayoral review. And then we can take up the items three and four remainder. So with that, we can have discussion on our new item, number one, the passive, passage of the resolution waiving attorney-client privilege on the legal memorandum. And I will recognize councilmember Wansley.
Thank you, Chair Payne. And actually, in response to the ordering recommendation that Clerk Carl mentioned, I prepare comments that kind of addresses the overall, like, package that we're bringing forward. So I'll speak to that. So colleagues, item, what was originally 5.1, now that is being motion to be postponed to the next cycle. Essentially, just summarizing, that is a directive to the city attorney requesting that we take all necessary actions to modify the current legal settlement agreement with the Minnesota Department of Human Rights to incorporate the provisions from the federal consent decree. I authored this directive to use the existing pathway outlined in the settlement agreement to essentially, you know, explore how the city could have a legally binding agreement that includes the reforms that were in that federal consent decree despite the dismissal by the Trump administration. This is an action in which I've been in communication with the city attorney's office, as well as with many of my colleagues since January. This action will also align the council with the mayor's recent comments about implementing the federal provisions and his most recently passed or approved executive order. The current agreement includes, again, a provision that allows the city and the Minnesota Department of Human Rights to jointly amend the settlement agreement that's currently in place for court consideration. So essentially, this motion was really, again, to outline a way for us to formalize that commitment as a city, and back those statements with a legally binding two-party agreement. As you all are aware, shortly before the last committee of the whole meeting, when this item was going to be considered, the city attorney's office released attorney-client privilege memo. The content of that memo raised many questions for me, and I know for several of my colleagues who I discussed it with. Given the matter that we know the consent decree is of high importance for both the public and the council, and as- And as Council President Payne highlighted, I believe this is a conversation that should be had in public. And particularly about what actions the city is or were not taking to protect those reforms that were included in the federal consent decree. And this essentially allows us to have that public conversation. So in order for us to do that, I worked with the clerks and the city attorneys to authorize a resolution that Council President Payne is naming as, I believe, item now five point one, which is a resolution to waive the attorney-client privilege on the memo. This action mirrors council action that actually took place in 2021 when there was a council vote to waive attorney-client privilege to allow for more transparent conversation about a matter of public interest. Lastly, I'm bringing forward item and because I'm mixing up, the newest motion, five point two, thank you, which is a staff direction to the city attorneys to write a public memo explaining what the internal process the city needs to take to activate provision 438 in the Minnesota Department of Human Rights settlement agreement. That provision is called mechanism to jointly modify agreement and it states the parties may jointly stipulate two changes, modification, modifications and amendments to this agreement. The privileged memo that council received from the city attorney's office included an opinion on why council could not activate that provision, but it did not explain affirmatively of how it does get activated. So this motion asks the city attorney to explain what the procedural process is to activate that provision, specifically within the context of our government structure. I also want to note that this directive is not asking for a memorandum about the federal consent decree specifically. It is asking for an explanation of the process to use this provision in general. And since the city signed on to this agreement over a year ago, I assume the city attorney's office has a general understanding of how that provision can be used and activated. As I stated earlier, I believe that there is widespread agreement that a modified MDHR settlement agreement to include the dismissed federal reforms is a shared desire outcome. So I would like to invoke a common phrase shared by Councilmember Kosky around like, don't tell me no, tell me how. Essentially, five point two is essentially making sure that we understand why the city, sorry, the, the waiver, which is now five point one, is essentially asking us to understand why the city attorney said no. And now five point two is asking them to tell us how the provision can be used. And I'm pretty sure this will, again, allow us to have a fruitful conversation with our residents, with the public around the actions that this body is taking to ensure that those provisions happen. So with that, that's why I'm supporting the motion to postpone item now five point three, I think that's what it is, or the five point four, thank you, Clerk Carl. And with that, I will motion items five point two and five point three for, sorry, five point one, five point two for approval.
Let's take those up one at a time. So we'll do five point one and then we'll do five point two separately. And still on this motion for privilege, I will recognize Councilmember Palmasano.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you for the clarification because I have an additional question on that second part. I have at least three points to make here, all in regards to the waiving of privilege. I'll be as brief as possible given the time. Point one, as mentioned this morning on a totally different topic, a lot of staff time is going into these, the takeaway from staff priorities. In this case, this issue has been extraordinarily taking away from something we all agree on. All of this takes time away from what our city attorney's office could otherwise be focusing on, including pursuing litigation against the Trump administration. That we would all agree is the highest priority, given our, the populations that we serve, not presentations to us on information that we already have. Point two. We seem to think it's politically convenient to waive attorney-client privilege now, yet that might not always be the case. And this really, really opens the door to what will be questions about how and when we will receive necessary confidential information from our attorneys. This feels like an unnecessarily dangerous slope that maybe we don't want to open that door. Point three, let's talk about risk and opening up ourselves to more liability than necessary. Something we each hold here, our basic oath of office that we took that comes with our election certificate. It affirms right after supporting the U.S. Constitution, supporting our state laws, our adherence to the charter. This is about our fiduciary responsibility. Our fiduciary responsibility as council members is not about protecting the bureaucracy, as many a skeptic might think. But it is about protecting and being good stewards of our city budget and not opening ourselves up to additional liability. Our responsibility by oath is to protect the city's interests, the whole city. And that's about our taxpayer dollars. I hear a lot about our efforts today on constitutional policing. That's important and we also need constitutional legislating by not voluntarily adding more and more to our own city's liability, like voluntarily. And let me add a fourth point here. This sure feels like another huge waste of time just for show, especially considering that someone already leaked this memo to a news outlet yet again. And I just need to say this, I know of one attorney up here on the dais. Maybe one of the rest of you went to law school and passed the bar, but, but she, Attorney Anderson, is our legal advisor. None of us up here are attorneys that I know of today. And I find it completely inappropriate to ask legal advice from one another or, as was done a few minutes ago, Council President Payne from Alifa. They are not our legal advisors. Neither I am or my colleagues are legal advisors in this matter. We have one city attorney giving us legal advice and it really needs to stay that way.
I'll remind colleagues to not impute motivations and folks' actions. Councilmember Rainville.
Thank you. My, I have two questions. One is of Councilmember Palmasano. So, so you were on the council the last time the attorney-client privilege was, was, I'm searching for the term revised or waived, waived, thank you. What was that circumstance?
Councilmember Palmasano.
Mr. Chair, Councilmember Rainville, I, it was a while ago. Can you refresh my memory and tell me when attorney-client privilege was waived up here on this dais?
Councilmember Rainville.
I, I believe we were told that it last happened in 21.
So could you tell me exactly what we waived attorney-client privilege for? I, I, I do not remember.
I don't, I don't know, and that's why I thought you might. I'm, I'm not trying to put you out of spot. Do, do you know Attorney Anderson, the last time that happened?
Council President, Councilmember Rainville, I'm actually gonna, gonna call on Clerk Carl because I think Clerk Carl has more information about what that situation was.
Councilmember Wansley or Clerk Carl, who wants to take it? Councilmember Wansley.
I'm pretty sure Clerk Carl will reaffirm because it's in the LAMS file, but this happened back on June, sorry. This happened April 24th, 2021, and the matter was related to a use of less lethal weapons in the city of Minneapolis.
Thank you. And my second question is for our attorney. What, what are we giving up by waiving this right? What, what is the downside to this? You know, clearly, this is instant client attorney privileges instituted for a reason.
Council President, Councilmember Rainville. So generally speaking, the purpose of the privilege, especially when it comes to attorney-client communications about litigation matters, is so that there can be frank discussions relating to litigation matters without that sharing of information creating any sort of risk to the city's legal interests in litigation. So generally speaking, privilege should be preserved to avoid any risk and I generally recommend against waivers. But, but it's not my decision whether to waive privilege. It is the client's decision and the client is the city acting through its duly authorized constituents, which is basically the officials that, that act as the city in these matters. So essentially, it's, you know, presentation, a vote by the council and presentation to the mayor, like other legislative actions. So it's not up to me to decide whether privilege should be waived. Again, you know, it is not my recommendation that privilege be waived in the normal course of things, but not my decision.
Thank you. Councilmember Cashman.
Thank you, President Payne. So my question is very similar to Councilmember Rainville's, is what is the risk of opening up this memo to the public? Attorney Anderson, who is the person that we might be at risk of being sued by? Like, what is the risk of sharing this information with the public?
Madam City Attorney.
Uh, Council President, oops, sorry, Council, Councilmember Cashman. So, you know, obviously, we are in litigation with MDHR. You know, theoretically, again, attorney-client communications about MDHR matters could be used against us by MDHR, could be used against us by, you know, potential interveners. You know, I, I don't want to sort of speculate about, about what the risk might be. I mean, I, I marked it attorney-client privilege because it has to do with, with ongoing litigation. So, you know, if, if it was just a, an opinion just about government structure without application to a litigation matter. You know, I have made other legal opinions about government structure public, but because this has to do with litigation, that's, that's why it's got the privilege.
So the groups in the litigation is, you know, you're thinking of the Minnesota Department of Human Rights? Because I did see Commissioner Rebecca Lucero told Axios that they have expressed openness to folding in the unique non-duplicative portions of the consent decree into the state level agreement. So it seems like they're in agreement with us on the process of doing that.
So Council President, Councilmembers, and I don't want to get too much into what the, what the memo talks about them. But the memo is really talking about, you know, the, the question about the, what you can and cannot direct the city attorney to do. Not just you, but also what the mayor can and cannot require the city attorney to do, which is, you know, not quite. The, the fact that the commissioner may or may not be open to, to modifying the settlement agreement doesn't, doesn't really impact the issues that are in the memo.
I just, I feel like we're all trying to get to an outcome of the Department of Justice consent decree provisions being folded into the MDHR settlement agreement. And if that's our goal, then how can we get there through the series of actions that are before us today? I see the new one that was just added asks for a public memo to explain the procedural process. And so if that's what the information that is needed, then why are we looking to waive privilege on the other memo?
Is that a question for me?
Yes.
Councilmember Cashman.
Councilmember Wansley.
Thank you, President Payne. As I highlighted in my introductory comments, Councilmember Cashman, it's to get an understanding of the basis that I think many of us are still unclear of, of why the city attorney said no in the first place. The second is to follow up and say, come at our next committee of the whole meeting with a memo and a presentation on how we can achieve, what you noted, the modification provision that's currently in the MDHR settlement agreement. So it's a full presentation on the city attorney's understanding of why they're saying we can't. And then to give us a presentation on how. So those are both complimentary. And you can't do that with a memo just being leaked to the public. We're asking for it to be made fully public through the mechanisms of this body so it can be added to LAMS as other legal memos have happened in the past. So even the one I referred to in 2021, the city attorneys even updated a memo that they felt was more comfortable for the public in regards to what they shared in the original memo with us last week. So that's an option for them as well. But there's nothing around actual risks right here, but I just at least wanted to reiterate the intent between both actions.
City Attorney Anderson.
Thank you, Council President. Another thing I guess I would point out, I mean, if, if what the body wants is better understanding of my legal opinions, we have the ability to have closed sessions to discuss that. And in fact, I've talked with Council President about having a closed session on Wednesday to discuss both my opinion in this memo and my ultimate legal opinion regarding whether we can or can't modify the settlement agreement to include the consent decree term. So those closed session meetings allow for, again, a frank deliberation and discussion between the, the council and the attorneys. So if the goal is to get this body to have a better understanding, that would be my recommendation.
Colleagues, we are at 3:58 and we have this room for two more minutes. I would suggest that we try to take this item up for a vote. Councilmember Chowdhury.
Just really quick, because I just want to make sure, for the record, us waiving privilege, that is not unconstitutional. And that's for the city attorney, right?
Council President, Councilmembers, so the privilege waiver, again, has to be voted on by this body and then it gets presented to the mayor. And then the mayor can veto it or approve it or, I mean, it's the normal process for passing an action.
So it is constitutional?
Yes, it's constitutional.
Okay, I just wanted to put that in the record because a member alleged that we were potentially doing something unconstitutional. And I thought that was really troublesome to put into the public record, so I wanted to provide that clarity.
In the interest of time, Councilmember Rainville, do you have something very quick?
Yes, I do. It would seem the prudent course would be to have a closed session after our meeting on Wednesday. If we're going to do this, let's do it right and let's do it correctly per our city attorney's advice. That's my recommendation. You have the power as a president to call a closed session, please invoke that power.
I believe it is the city attorney that ultimately holds that power, but we have had a confirming conversation that we will do a closed session. But we still have to dispose of this and so with that, I will ask the clerk to call the roll.
And that's on approval?
This is on approval of passage of resolution five point one, correct?
Correct, the waiver.
Councilmember, Council President Payne.
Aye.
Wansley.
Aye.
Rainville.
No.
Vita.
No.
Ellison is absent. Osman.
Aye.
Cashman.
Abstain.
Jenkins.
Nay.
Chukti.
Aye.
Kosky.
Aye.
Palmasano.
No.
Vice Chair Chowdhury.
Aye.
Chair Chavez.
Aye.
There are seven ayes, four nays, and one abstention.
That motion carries. Next, we will take up what is now.
Your speaker.
That passes and we will now take up item, what is now five point two, the Wansley motion on the mechanism for amending the settlement agreement. I'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
Councilmember Payne.
Aye.
Wansley.
Aye.
Rainville.
No.
Vita.
No.
Osman.
Aye.
Cashman.
Aye.
Jenkins.
I just want to state, I would wish we would have had discussion on this item prior to calling the vote, but no.
Chukti.
Aye.
Kosky.
Aye.
Palmasano.
No.
Vice Chair Chowdhury.
Aye.
Chair Chavez.
Aye.
There are eight ayes and four nays.
That carries and then the final item was an item for discussion of which we don't have the time, so I will.
Mr. Chair, we can take about 10 minutes.
We have about 10 minutes on that? Okay, just very quickly. Item number four is a letter that was drafted to share with the mayor. Item number four was a letter that I drafted to share with the mayor alongside with other colleagues.
Speaker.
Item number, actually. outlast both this mayor and the city council. An executive order may bind the administration, but only in so much as it binds it to another mayor who is willing to continue those provisions. A future mayor could rescind that executive order. We want to figure out what is the right mechanism to bind this institution to these provisions, and to bind the institution requires an act of both the council and the mayor. It requires a collaboration between both the council and the mayor. So I'm very grateful for all of my colleagues who also signed on to this letter. There's a supermajority of signers to this letter, and it shows our commitment to police reform and our commitment to bind this institution to delivering on those provisions. And so I just wanted to share that this has been passed along to the mayor. I was hoping to have a much more robust conversation on the matter, but as I said in the previous items, it's really important that we have this process play out in public, and play out in public as much as possible. I think that, I'm hoping that we're going to learn more in our closed session on Wednesday about what the right balance of public versus privileged is, but I think part of what is going to fulfill the promise of reform is not just that we say that we're doing things, but that our community can trust that we are actually doing those things. And the way that we build that trust is through openness, honesty, transparency, and acknowledgement of when we're failing. And I think that that acknowledgement of failing is as important as it is the commitment that we are going to try. So, you know, the mayor has expressed preferences in the past of just pick up the phone and call me, but those types of conversations are not accessible to our community, and so this letter is a public commitment to our desire to work collaboratively with the mayor to really figure this out. This is going to be not figured out in the next cycle. It's not going to be figured out in the next term. This is going to be a multi-year project that hopefully will deliver on the legacy of George Floyd.
And, Mr. President, the action here is to receive and file. We need to create a new LEMS file, so it's not to vote on the letter. The letter's been sent to the mayor. For clarity, this is a receive-and-file for the body to put it into LEMS for public access.
Correct, for the purposes of transparency. So, do we want to have five minutes of discussion on this? I see Councilmember Palmasano in queue.
Mr. Chair, I was in queue for the previous item that we had zero time left and had to vote on. I don't find it appropriate in the stewardship of this body that the timekeeper gives extra time to make sure that your letter gets discussed. I had a substantive question to the author on the last one and had to take a vote without it, and seeing it up here for the first time, that did not allow me the opportunity to reach out to her beforehand. So that's that. Moving on, just like you, I don't need public transmissions of memos and receive-and-files of things being made public between the council and the mayor to discuss matters with him.
Well, with that, we have completed all items on the subcommittee agenda. I can pass the chair back over to Councilmember Chavez, and I don't know that we're going to have time for reports.
Well, we are, because I'm not going to get yelled at after this meeting. So finally, we will receive reports from the standing committees on matters to be considered by the full council on Wednesday. We will first begin with the AEL Committee, Councilmember Wonsley.
Thank you, Chair Chavez. I'm gonna pull a Councilmember Ellison and just read the headline. The Administration Enterprise Oversight Committee has brought or will be bringing forward 24 items. Those are all publicly available via LEMS, just being cognizant of time, because you know this is often the longest report next to this. So yes, any questions, please don't hesitate to reach out to my office.
So we have Council Vice President with the Budget Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The Budget Committee is bringing forward two items. All of you were in committee this morning when we took those up. Please let me know if you have any questions.
You. Next up, we have the Business Housing and Zoning Committee. I'll pass it to Councilmember Chowdhury.
Vice Chair Chavez.
Chair Chavez. Thank you, Chair Chavez. The Biz Committee will be bringing 16 items to the city council meeting. I have, I struggle just reading the headlines for this, so I'm just gonna read it. Number one, passage of resolution approving Minneapolis Homes Property Sales and Finance Agreements. Number two, approving an appointment to the City Planning Commission. Number three, approving a permanent expansion license and sidewalk cafe license for Black Sheep Pizza. Number four, approving nine liquor licenses. Number five, approving 54 liquor license renewals. Number six, approving four gambling licenses. Number seven, authorizing grant submittals to the 2025 Met Council Livable Communities Accounts. Number eight, accepting and authorizing a construction grant from the state for the Upper Harbor Terminal Outdoor Music Venue. Number nine, authorizing a contract amendment for the project at 2714 Bryan Avenue. Number 10, adopting the alternative urban area review and mitigation plan for the Upper Harbor Terminal. Number 11, authorizing a great streets loan to the Latino Center for Community Engagement. Number 12, approving 21 appointments to the Minneapolis Advisory Committee on Housing. Number 13, approving an appointment to the Minneapolis Public Housing Authority Board of Commissioners. Number 14, approving two amendments to the 2025 license fee schedule related to window cleaning and sauna establishments. Number 15, approving a legislative directive related to the Minneapolis Skyways. Number 16, approving a staff direction related to pet restrictions and rental properties. With that, I'll stand for any questions or comments.
Thank you. There are no questions or comments. Next up, we have the Climate and Infrastructure Committee. I'll pass it to Councilmember Cashman.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Climate and Infrastructure has seven items. Item one and two relate to, well, the first one is about sewers, the second is lead service line replacement, three is a variance request for Lake Harriet Parkway, four is accepting a local climate action grant, five is a cooperative agreement with the county for the reconstruction of Franklin Ave., six is prioritizing a bridge replacement list, and seven is approving comments on the supplemental final environmental impact statement for the Blue Line extension and submitting those comments to the Met Council. That'll stand for questions.
Thank you. No one is on cue. And lastly, we're gonna go with the Public Health and Safety Committee, which has four items. Item number one is an honorary resolution for victims of police brutality. Item number two is accepting and authorizing a grant for the Minnesota Auto Theft Prevention with the Minnesota Department of Public Safety. Item number three is considering a joint powers agreement with the state for law enforcement and support services. This item was forwarded without recommendation. And lastly, item number four is approving a 21 appointment to the Safe and Thriving Communities Work Group. With that, I'll stand by for any questions. And seeing no questions, with that, we've concluded all business to committee for committee today, and hearing no objection, I will declare this meeting adjourned on time. Bye.